Good morning. It's nine AM and I will call to order the June twenty second meeting of the Sling County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Please stand for the flag salute and then for a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Uh. Citizens input at this time and please keep your on information that is not on the agenda today and for three minutes only.
Norman Matuslana, it's in the news more often about voting rights. And when an action item requires a vote, are we in violation of people's voting rights if we don't allow the people to vote on this? Because the Attorney General said if we're not allowed to vote, he will pursue this to the fullest extent of the law, Merrick Garland, the Attorney General of the United States. So. If we have to abide by it, why don't we have the right to vote on it?
All right. First off, if everyone can make sure that the microphones and other electronic devices are muted when you are not speaking so that remote observers can hear the proceedings clearly, I would appreciate it. Now Fred, our IT director could instruct everyone on how to raise their hand in the meeting.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. No constituents have joined the Zoom meeting at this time.
Okay. Uh, at this time, we'll move to our consent agenda, which consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of payroll is presented, and a approval of public forum agenda as presented. Are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete items from the consent agenda?
No, not me.
There are no objection. The consent agenda will stand approved. We will move into action items. Item one.
RFA one eight nine dash two one, RX benefits administrative services agreement with Marilyn Lemer, human resources director.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, we are requesting approval and signature of the addendum to the administrative services agreement with RX benefits for our pharmacy benefit management. RX benefits is our current pharmacy benefit manager. This addendum is effective January one twenty one and is resulting in enhancements, discounts, rebates, fees from our previous agreement. This agreement has been reviewed and approved by our insurance consultants and legal counsel. The alternatives for action is to sign the agreement, do not sign the agreement, delay for further information. Our recommendation is to sign the addendum to the administrative services agreement with RX benefits. There is no additional budget impact and the addendum actually reduces some costs and the amount estimated about thirty one thousand dollars to our plan.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments by commissioners? Any members of the public who wish to speak? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the addendum to the administrative services agreement with RX benefits as presented by staff.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number one eighty nine dash twenty one, RX benefits administrative services agreement. Are there any further comments? If not, we'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Item two.
RFA one eight five dash two one, regional public health emergency preparedness fiscal agent with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, Mr. Tiller.
Good morning, gentlemen. It's good to be hearing something other than COVID. Um, for, I guess since early two thousand up until two thousand fourteen, Celine County Health Department was the fiscal agent for the regional public health emergency preparedness grant, which administers the uh fees for the regional coordinator and expenses to provide the services to those six counties listed on the RFA as part of the central Kansas FEP region. Now in two thousand fourteen during the transition year, um, that was shifted to Barton County. Uh, recently Barton County Health Department has expressed interest that they would like to relinquish that. Um, and in conversation with both their health department and they have also discussed this with their county administrator and commission. Um, are are ready to hand that back over. Um, we as the, not only the largest health department in our six county region, um, but we have also several times throughout the last six years have either provided assistance to the other counties backfield in this regional coordinator position. And so we also have the capability and capacity to be uh in a better position to act as the fiscal agent for uh this grant for the region. Um, alternatives for action, uh, of course, is to refuse this request. Uh, and Barton County will either remain the fiscal agent or have to seek out somebody else, uh, send me back for more information. Or approve us to once again be the fiscal agent for the regional public health emergency preparedness grant. Um, my recommendation, I think, is pretty clear that we reassume those duties as the fiscal agent. Um, in the best interest of not only of our county, but of our preparedness region. Um, as we have the best ability to be able to do so. Um, as far as budget impact, if this is not approved, there is no impact to our budget. Um, if approved, however, we would oversee the uh grant amount of thirty six thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and be able to assess five percent uh from that grant for uh being the fiscal agent, which is approximately one thousand eight hundred and thirty five dollars and uh fifty cents for the time that my finance officer would spend just um processing the grant transactions.
Thank you. Are there any further comments by the commissioners? Any members of the public who wish to speak? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the Sling County Health Department as the fiscal agent for the regional public health emergency preparedness grant as outlined in RFA one eighty five dash twenty one.
Second motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number one eighty five dash twenty one, regional public health emergency preparedness fiscal uh agent. Are there any further comments? If not, we'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item three.
RFA one eight six dash two one, annual WIC letter of understanding with Ellsworth County with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
So, back again.
Yes.
Um, so since two thousand ten and this is, I think, now the third year that I have had to come to see you about this letter of understanding. Um, but we have shared a registered dietitian with Ellsworth County's WIC services at their health department. Um, since they do not have one and for it it just wouldn't make sense for them to try and hire one for sixteen hours a month. Um, it's just not feasible. And so as part of our partnership with them, we have provided those services. Um, and this letter of understanding continues to clarify the roles and responsibilities between our health department and Ellsworth County Health Department. Um, and updates the signers. All costs are covered by the WIC program. There is no additional cost to Celine County as all costs uh within the WIC program are covered by the WIC program itself. Additionally, since our uh WIC coordinator lives in Ellsworth, there is no travel cost associated since she just goes then that day to the Ellsworth County Health Department, does her uh, provides her services there instead of driving to Celine County and then back there. Uh, this letter was originally signed in July twenty nineteen. Uh, the original was approved by county counselor and there still continue to be no changes. Um, on a side note, um, I would prefer that we would be able to just do this once and then bring it back if there are changes. However, the Kansas WIC program wants a new one, you know, dated every year. So alternatives um are to sign the letter along with the Health Department Director and continue these services, uh, send myself back for more information. Or don't sign the letter and just continue this long time relationship. Um, I recommend that the commission chair along with myself sign this letter and continue this longstanding partnership between our counties. Uh, as far as budget impact, as I mentioned before, there's no impact to the budget as any expense is reimbursed one hundred percent through the WIC grant.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments by the commission?
I have one question, Jason.
Yes.
Give me a little education on what Lincoln County's role is in this.
So many years ago, there were um, there was a whole different type of structure and Lincoln County was the parent county for um, I think Ellsworth and a couple of other counties' WIC programs. Um, and so Lincoln County, and this is the way I understand it, Lincoln County is still the parent program for um, Ellsworth County's WIC program. However, they do not have a registered dietitian to be able to provide the nutrition services and the the finalization of services that have to be done for WIC clients. So this is where we entered into that agreement with them well over a decade ago to provide that uh registered dietitian portion of that services. Thank you.
You know their comments, questions? Any member of the public who wish to speak? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the Seline County and Ellsworth County Health Department Letter of Understanding regarding sharing the WIC registered dietitian.
Second motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number one eighty six dash twenty one, annual WIC letter of understanding with Ellsworth County. Are there any further comments? If not, we'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Jason, before you, before you leave, uh, could you give us a really brief uh update on COVID? How many cases are going? I know it's all on the website, but just for the public knowledge, what's going on right now? Right, so the really kind of thirty second brief, COVID still kind of tenaciously is holding on a little bit, however. Um, it's in very small numbers. We're seeing single digit uh cases uh weekly, which we have gone to weekly reporting because those numbers have dropped so low. So we do our updates on the dashboard on Wednesdays and that reflects the change from the previous seven days of cases as well as the change in the previous seven days of the numbers and percentage of those vaccinated in the county as well. So while we still continue to make uh small forward progress and and getting the getting the population vaccinated, um, cases are still out there in very, very small numbers. Our active cases are staying below twenty five at this point, um, which is uh, like, you know, highly manageable. Um, and I don't think, you know, that it's that it's going to be that we get to zero in the next six months. However, um, I think we are certainly continuing on a much better position, much d- much better direction, I should say. Are are citizens still uh able to come to the health department or do they have to go to Salina Family Care or? How do they go? In order to get vaccinated? Yes. Um, so if they still go on to vaccines.gov or vaccine finder.org, they can get vaccinated at pharmacies, urgent care, hospital, their primary care. Um, we still are currently not doing them uh at the health department simply because there are so, there are so many places that they can go to um, that are able to provide that vaccine. Um, and it still comes in those multi-dose vials, which um, you know, we still want to be concerned about not wasting doses. Um, and since there are certainly many a places they can just walk into, um, it just makes more sense from a supply standpoint to not do it at the health department until there is a time where it's not really widely available and and we will look at taking it on. Hopefully by then they will have come out with single dose. And what is the minimum age? So minimum age for Pfizer is down to twelve. Um, Moderna and Johnson and Johnson are still both eighteen and over. Um, and so you can see that reflection on our dashboard as well that we are seeing a lot in that twelve to seventeen age group that are getting vaccinated. Um, we are also still, um, although it's probably not as highly visible, working with the Vaccine Collaborative that we've been working with since December, um, which is again is us, Salina Family and Salina Regional to put on um small vaccine clinics in different places, especially in the some of those hard to reach areas um, to try and bring vaccine where it's needed. Um, and we have, I believe, we also have, um, many of you are familiar with the Back to School Fair that takes place um in the community around the end of July every year and there will be a vaccine clinic there for those twelve and older and for adults as well. So just keeping an eye on social media or vaccine finder.gov, vaccine, or excuse me, vaccines.gov or vaccine finder.org takes you to the same place. Um, we'll have all the locations of what's happening, when, where, et cetera. For adults, are we right around that forty percent uh vaccination level? Um, no, our total vaccination, I would have to go back and look at the breakdown for eighteen and over. Um, but our total population vaccine level right now is at thirty seven point seven, if I remember correctly. When you say our, for our total population, that fifty five thousand people, that includes adolescents and everybody else, so. And that's how it's reported, not only statewide, but US wide and worldwide. So in order to keep that consistent and not confused, um, that's why we stay with reporting with total population so that we're comparing apples to apples throughout. Well, I certainly wish to thank you and your staff and everybody that that was in the the arena of dealing with this and thank you for your efforts and and continued efforts that that go along with this. So thanks so much. Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen, for your support during that as well. I don't think we would have been anywhere near as successful without support of both the city and county commission and the community leaders and the business community to make that happen. So, thank you.
Thank you for the update. Okay, item number four.
RFA one eight seven dash two one, Salina Airport Authority Dickinson County and McPherson Fire District Memorandum of Understanding and Talk Group Authorizations with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning, Mr. Philip.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So a couple of weeks ago Deputy County Administrator Hannah Stanbaugh came before you with a group of talk group authorizations and these are uh memoranda with neighboring public safety agencies that um, want to be a part of our local communication system for uh public safety. And um, as you are well aware, we are transitioning to a new system, so all those talk groups had to be updated. Uh, Hannah was hoping to have everything to you in one big group, but there were a few of them that lagged behind. And so today I have three such agreements with Salina Airport Authority Dickinson County and the McPherson Fire Department. And that's uh pretty much all I have to say. Our recommendation, of course, is to approve and uh sign the talk group authorizations and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Are any further comments or questions by the commissioners? Any members of the public who wish to speak? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the MOUs uh and talk group authorizations as presented by staff.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number one eighty seven dash twenty one, Salina Airport Authority Dickinson County and McPherson Fire Department Memorandum of Understanding and Talk Group Authorizations. Are there any further comments? If not, we'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Phil. Item number five.
RFA one eight eight dash two one, resolution twenty one dash two three three five, creation of Equipment Reserve Fund with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning again, Phil.
Good morning again. So at your commission's budget discussion on June the third, we talked about the fact that we've traditionally in Celine County funded equipment replacement on an annual basis and there might be a need to actually set aside money for some larger replacements. The specific example that we had talked about was election equipment, but there might be other um, larger pieces of equipment that we would want to do as well. And so the commission had directed me to go figure out a way to do that um sort of savings account, if you will. And so I spoke with our uh outside auditor, uh Randy Hoffmeyer, and then got an example of such a resolution, uh creating an equipment reserve fund from uh Harvey County, actually, thanks to their administrator down there and ran it by uh County Counselor Mike Montoya and he has approved it as to form. So would request uh that the commission adopt resolution twenty one dash twenty three thirty five, which would create an equipment reserve fund. And then we would include in the budget for twenty twenty two a transfer in the amount of fifty thousand dollars uh as the initial seed money for that fund. And I'd be happy to answer questions.
Uh, as we go forward, uh, this is for any equipment within the county or is this strictly election equipment?
Um, it's not strictly election equipment. It could be for other equipment. Um, some other counties actually use it for um, things like vehicles. Um, so that's a potential use.
So as we go forward, uh, I mean, the line items that the Sheriff's Department, uh, road and bridge, uh, you know, road graders, things like that, would they fall under this category?
Well, I hesitate to lump road and bridge in with this because road and bridge has their own set of accounts for special equipment. But I think anything in the general fund is such as sheriff's vehicles um would be a potential.
And I share your concern there to lump uh road and bridge in there and potentially even Sheriff's Department uh from from vehicle standpoint. I mean, you know, they come forward with four, five, six, seven vehicles and uh uh, county clerk as an example is needing new election equipment, which would potentially eat up the the level that's in there. And yet maybe the sheriffs, and I'm just, I'm not picking on the sheriff, but maybe their department comes forward with a hundred thousand dollars worth of vehicles request and there's only hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there and that's going to leave uh other departments short. So I think that's something we sure need to monitor as to who is potentially going to uh dive into that fund.
To follow up on Commissioner Vidrickson, um, the sheriff has the ability. He he knows the lifespan of a vehicle usually when he hits his miles. Though the one thing that that we were looking at is uh, when it, when it comes to election equipment, you uh, you hope you get a long lifespan out of it, but it's a when it, when the time comes to replace it, it's a rather expensive uh item. And to have that money earmarked, it's easy for us to say we're earmarking this for election equipment in ten years or whatever. Um, but this body changes and uh and to have that reminder, well, this was set up to take care of this specific need and and if, I guess it wouldn't have to be a specific need, but it's, it's what we are recognizing right now. So I I hope that verbiage or or understanding is out there for further or future commissioners.
Yeah, and I think it could, um, you know, this, this is a um a solution to a particular need at this time, but it could serve to uh be a solution for other needs as well. Um, for example, um uh, air conditioning equipment. Um, you know, we might, you know, most of our general fund departments are in this building, which is managed by the building authority, but we do have a few um, senior services and uh uh expo center where it might behoove us in the future to start setting aside money on an annual basis for a twenty or thirty year cycle of replacement of some of that HVAC equipment as well. So um, with, this is creating a separate fund. Within the fund, you could have um, departments and line items just like any other fund and sort of keep track of all that. Uh, but it is ultimately the discretion of whatever body of county commissioners is here at the time um on how to spend that.
On on the surface, I'm very much in favor of this uh to to set up this account. I'm I'm wondering, and you know, as we go forward, then it can be monitored by you or suggested how how people can get at this money and so forth. Uh, I'm curious right now, though, is fifty thousand dollars enough for this initial go around? I mean, you know, we did the same thing at the Expo Center when we set up a fund uh long ago, or a few years ago anyway, to renovate the, and uh, as luck would have it, we're coming in under the money that we have saved for, it looks like. So uh, I I'm just curious if we shouldn't be putting away more than a hundred thousand dollars or more than a fifty thousand dollars. So but that's for probably year two and three and so forth.
E- exactly, Commissioner. I would say. I would say let's start small and build it as we identify potential uses. Yeah.
And identify those departments that we're going to take that equipment line item out of their budget and come from this.
This makes sense to me. It's a good business decision, and it's obviously stuff set aside for a rainy day. It's not set aside for annual expenses like cars or those sorts of things. It just, we don't know what's going to come up. And I think this would be helpful for future commissions that when something big does come up that's not in the budget, there's money set aside. And that's just, that's what families do, and that's what businesses do. That's a good decision.
Yeah, I kind of look at it as like a standard depreciation fund, you know?
Yep.
Yep.
So. Good point.
So, anyway, any other comments by the commissioners?
If memory if memory comes to me in the past, the county has budgeted equipment such as election stuff. It just hasn't been earmarked. It was just set aside in anticipation. But this is a clean way of having a resolution that spills out its use. So it makes sense.
Any members of the public who wish to speak? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three thirty-five, creating an equipment reserve fund for future replacements of election equipment.
Second motion. It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number one eighty-eight dash twenty-one, Resolution twenty-one dash two three three five, Creation of Equipment Reserve Fund. Any further comments? If not, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Phil. At this time, we will move into the informational items. Item one.
County Administrator's update.
I'll kick back again. Just a few things to update the commission on. First, regarding the American Rescue Plan Act, I had a meeting with the city of Salina. It seems like there's some commonality in terms of housing between the things that are on our list of potential ARPA expenditures and on their list. So we will concentrate on having some further discussions on how we can use some of that funding to address the housing needs in the community. Speaking of needs in the community, I had mentioned to the commission previously that our consultants from iParametrics will be in town in July and will appear at your commission meeting on July twentieth. We're also organizing a community meeting on July nineteenth, that Monday. And so would encourage folks to save the date for that. And I've sent out some notes to some folks that came to mind, but I'm sure there are other folks that we will want to get involved. And lastly, do have a draft agreement out to the Salina Airport Authority to formalize the grant award that your commission gave to them. So I'm waiting to hear back from them, and then I'll, of course, bring it to the commission as an RFA for signature. The other item that I had put down today is that we are continuing to try and modernize some of our processes around here. So the accounts payable that the commission approved as part of the consent calendar today, which you normally get in a folder, today you're getting it in your email box so that you can sign it electronically for the first time. So please be on the lookout for that in your email. And then, last but not least, I don't want to steal any thunder from anyone. You will be seeing an RFA or two next Tuesday, but sometimes grant funders like to make big press releases, and I don't want the commission to be surprised by the fact that the senior center in the last two days has gotten two significant grant awards. So I'm very excited about that, and we'll have more information coming next Tuesday.
Very good. Good deal. Thank you. Item two.
Commissioners' comments.
I would say that I attended the Airport Authority meeting last week, based on what Phil just said and so forth. The airport authority was very appreciative and asked me to relay that message to the county commission regarding the grant that we gave them for the airport, the one point six million dollars for the Houston flight. The other big thing out there is they're very much moving forward with the expansion of their terminal to make it larger and more efficient. And that's on the radar now, too. So there are a lot of action going on at the airport.
I attended the Central Kansas Mental Health Annual Monthly Meeting yesterday, and they're busy.
And last Tuesday, I attended the Tri River Fair Board Meeting, and they're going pretty much strong down the road with the fair this year. And this will be the last time the Saline County, or not Saline County, but the Tri River Fair will be held in the stadium where they have the rodeo and the demolition duress. And so this will be the last year for that. So I hope everybody can make it a good turnout this year. Another question I came up, because it was discussed one time here down the road in the past here about the wheat that was over in the, where the jail is going to be built. Did we ever find somebody to cut that, or what did we do with that?
The sheriff had a conversation with a local farmer, and I think we have somebody who's willing to cut that for us and give us a percentage of the
Thank you, I was just
Yeah, we thought at the time that we signed the agreement that things might progress a little faster, and we might end up wasting the majority of that crop. But the weather has turned nice before they had to get out there and start moving trailers in. So we should get a little bit of return on that.
Thank you. Any other comments by commissioners? Okay, there's no other further comments, no business? I would just call this meeting adjourned. Oh, wait a minute. Announcements, I'm sorry. I stole your thunder, didn't I? Excuse me. Item three. Announcements.
We also have an executive session.
There's one more page.
Let me turn that over one more time.
Mr. Chair, if there are no announcements, staff would request an executive session under the employer-employee negotiations exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for fifteen minutes for the purpose of discussing our memorandum of agreement with the Saline County Association of Public Employees. Attendees would be the commission, myself, and HR Director Marilyn Leimer.
So moved and reconvened in this room at nine fifty.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same time. Sorry, boss.
Okay, thank you. We are back into regular session. Any other comments or business?
No action.
No action taken. Thank you. Any other thing? Okay, we will just call this.